All right, we are recording. All right, welcome everybody. Let's go ahead and get started with our third and final session of the evening. So, welcome candidates and attendees to the Poway Democratic Club's 2020 Candidates Forum. The Poway Democratic Club provides members with information, opportunities to take action, and ultimately works towards promoting fair, inclusive, and responsible government at all levels. My name is Amit Saravala. I am the current club president. I'll be the moderator tonight. We also have Janet Johnson, our club vice president here. Janet is going to be keeping time for you candidates, so from time to time she will raise up her cards that you know how much time you have left. And we also have Carla Hernandez here behind our logo. She is the treasurer of the club and she is helping manage Zoom in case there are questions going on in the chat in the meantime that she used to flag, you know, flag me for. As mentioned, this is our third and final session of the evening. We're joined by the candidates for Poway City Council Districts Two and Four. So we want to thank, extend a thank you to all five candidates who are joining us tonight. Before I hand it off to them, I just want to quickly go over the format. And the candidates have all been made aware of this at a time. But candidates will each have one minute for opening statements. At the end, you're gonna have one minute for closing statements. In between, I'm gonna be asking approximately 10 questions depending on time. And you'll each have one minute to answer. We know it's not a lot of time, so it's really about just being succinct and getting that main point across. The questions were generated by the board and club members and guests who wrote in over the past few weeks. And though we are a democratic club, we're trying to be as fair as possible with these questions. We try not to have any gotcha questions and nothing that tips the scales towards one candidate's response over another. We really just want to hear your best thinking about how to serve Poway. And we have not shared any of these questions with anyone outside the board. So, we have from District Two candidates Phil Factor and Barry Leonard. Barry is the incumbent. We have from District Four Caitlin Frank, Frank Fournier, and Chris Holtz. Frank, am I pronouncing your last name right?
Yeah, Fournier.
Great, thank you. And if I'm mispronouncing anyone else's name, please let me know. Otherwise, I think I'm good. All right, so we're gonna begin with our one minute each of opening statements. We're gonna start alphabetically, so Phil Factor, I will hand it over to you.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna start off by telling you I am a Democrat and I'm proud of that. Good evening, I'm Phil Factor and I'm running for Poway City Council District Two. I came to Poway in 1976 to be a teacher, a coach, and a community leader. I came here with my wife, and this is where we raised our two sons. My wife and I have been down together 50 years. In fact, in 10 days, we'll be celebrating our 50th anniversary. When I taught at Poway in the Poway Unified School District, I provided guidance and support for my students and their families. And now I want to do that for the community. I will support our sheriff department, our fire department. I will safeguard the Poway Center for Performing Arts, the Big Stone Lodge, and all of Poway's rural lands. As your next city council member, I, Phil Factor, would be a representative who listens and works hard to find solutions with a collective focus. I will put people first. You're gonna hear me say that a lot tonight. People are why I'm running.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, so just going alphabetically, Caitlin Frank, over to you.
Thank you, good evening. I'm Caitlin Frank and I've been on the Poway City Council since 2018. I'm proud to represent the whole city, but I'm especially excited to be running for reelection in District Four. Born and raised in San Diego County and the daughter of two cops, I learned from a young age the importance of giving back and public service. That upbringing greatly influenced my career path, which started in the US House of Representatives, later at the County of San Diego, and finally here at the City of Poway, where I'm able to use my knowledge and experience to better serve our community. Over the last few years, we've accomplished some great things such as approving the new community senior center, acquiring more open space, revitalizing Poway Road, and building new affordable housing for seniors, senior veterans, and developmentally disabled adults. We've also taken unprecedented steps to support our small businesses during this pandemic. Things like small business loans, the picnic table loan program, meals for seniors, other steps that cities, steps that other cities have replicated. My husband and I are proud to be raising our family in Garden, in South Poway. Our daughter just started preschool near Garden Road. And our son at six months is as old as this quarantine, but much cuter. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I apologize Caitlin, I forgot to mention that you are the incumbent in District Four when I was introducing you. Okay, moving on, Frank Fournier.
Well, we're here tonight to figure out what the candidates are about, and we only have a minute, so I think it makes the most sense to ask a basic question. How are we qualified? And so, let me answer that right off the bat. I'm a Medical Research Alliance Manager. Basically, in negotiating and coming up with solutions during conflicts is my day to day. My job is to maintain a healthy partnership between my company and another company as we achieve a specific goal. Stakeholders range from executives to researchers and to operation managers. All must be managed, organized, and kept aimed at completing the goal through active communication. This is analogous to the various moving parts and stakeholders within the city. Working with the public and other council members and relevant experts to oversee the city manager's office and city attorney. So I believe these qualities make me the ideal city council representative for Poway District Four. And I aim to be as transparent as possible, and I'm excited to answer questions for everyone to get a better sense of who I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving down the list, Barry Leonard, over to you.
Thank you, Amit. Thank you for doing this as well. I hope that this will provide the voters with an ability to make an informed decision on November 3rd. As a current council member, I'm proud of being a voice for Poway residents. I'm known for being available for demonstrating empathy, bringing common sense to problem solving, and working hard to represent every Powayian in every neighborhood. Now that we've gone to D2, I'm, you know, committed to improving the quality of life there. Our community requires that dedication and commitment and a careful management if it's gonna flourish. During our council tenure, I've voted to enhance the quality of life by funding our new community center. We've got a beautiful place that's ahead of schedule and under budget. We've done affordable housing projects. We've got a special needs project that's going up on Oakdale Road. We've got a senior project with a veterans preference plan for Terriscane and Poway Road. And we've made some really meaningful strides there. So I've been in Poway for 17 years. I've been married now for almost 37, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and Chris Holtz, over to you.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank everybody that turned out tonight and has stayed around, and also those watching, I guess, in the future. Hi to you. Tonight, I'm hoping that we can get some important questions answered. I've lived in Poway for 30 years. I've chosen to settle down here and raise my own family here, as well as being raised here. Poway is really a part of who I am and a part of what made me who I am. I served for the, in the US Navy for eight years before returning to Poway and settling down and now raising my nine-year-old son and our newest addition, our nine-month-old daughter. I really hope that through today's questions, we can identify and solve problems and you can see who will have those solutions. I've already spoken with many different groups throughout Poway, one of them being the DEM Club, and I want to thank them for their efforts tonight. And also for the rating of qualified that they gave to me at a previous meeting. I'm hoping that I can show you my answers are the right answers for your vote this November.
Thank you, everyone. All right, we're gonna move on to the questions. So, as mentioned, it's one-minute response. I will repeat the question for each person, so we will begin your time after I'm done repeating the question. And we're gonna start round robin here, and we'll start with Caitlin. All right, Caitlin, what do you consider to be the most important tasks and responsibilities of this position?
Thank you. I think the most important tasks are, one, keeping residents safe. That's really the primary duty of a city is to keep their residents safe. And the next is to provide services that keep our quality of life high. We enjoy a lot of services in Poway. We have fantastic parks. We have recreation programs. We have great streets. But number one is we're the safest city in the county, and I think that's a huge reason why people live here, why they stay here, why they raise their families here. And it's important that we keep our eye on that and we maintain that as a priority. Being endorsed by our Deputy Sheriff's Association and the Poway Firefighters Association shows that that's a huge priority for me. They recognize that I am public safety's choice, and I think that that is something that we have to maintain at the highest degree to keep people feeling like this is the community to raise a family in.
Thank you. Frank Fournier, over to you. The question is, what do you consider to be the most important tasks and responsibilities of this position?
I have to agree with Caitlin. I think the most important thing is the amenities we have within the city, which includes public safety. But I think the harsh reality as a council member is that you must work with relevant experts and the public in order to be oversight on the city attorney and the city manager, who are really conducting and doing all the, I guess, putting in plans that actually run the city. And so that's my biggest push as a council member is working with the public to get their idea of what they want to see in Poway now and in the next 20 years. Do we want to continue to be the city in the country? Or do we want to put that motto in history? And for me, at least, I'd like to see it stay the same as when I went to high school here and middle school, and I'd like to see my kids grow up in the same city that I grew up in.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Barry Leonard. What do you consider to be the most important tasks and responsibilities of this position?
Well, as Caitlin said, the most important thing is public safety. There's no question there. We spend an awful lot of money, a majority of our budget, on public safety, and it's a good investment. We have, the Sheriff's Department does a terrific job in Poway. And our fire department, who are direct city employees, we provide them with excellent training, great equipment, and the ability to come and talk to us if they need anything. Relationship with the chief is wonderful. One of the other really important things, though, is the management of our resources. And we have a responsibility to hire a city manager that acts as the CEO of the city business and a city attorney that keeps us in line legally. We've been able to have almost a complete turnover of those two departments, which we have, and then many of our director departments, and we have built a team that functions very, very well. So I'd say management of resources is next to public safety. And I think we've done both of these things very well. That's why Poway is very preferred for most folks when they want to move into a place that has a high quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Holtz, what do you consider to be the most important tasks and responsibilities of this position?
So with regard to this position, I think it's important to remember that city council acts as oversight. Staff comes up with what the plans are. They go through the hard work of making sure that things are vetted. They present them to council, and then council is making sure that the work is done, the questions are answered. And the public, if they have questions, are being addressed and communicated with. So there's transparency needed. There's a lot of communication needed. Overall, that oversight piece is one of the bigger pieces that I think is missing. A lot of our authorities in the last few years have been delegated from council to the staff and the city manager's role. And that has allowed for things like Vantage Point to get approved, built, and up with little to no oversight from council. You know, it was a staff approval administrative backroom thing. So when you have things like that happening and the community has no knowledge of it, no idea what's going on, we really need to look back at that oversight piece and see, are we doing a good job there?
Thank you. And Phil Factor, what do you consider to be the most important tasks and responsibilities of this position?
Well, our audience just heard four speakers, and I agree with all four of you guys, but it's not Phil Factor's answer. I'm gonna tell you, after going to meeting after meeting after meeting, talking to people and hearing their concerns about this city council, I really figured it out. People need to come first, and they haven't with this city council. So I'm gonna say this. My answer to it is put people first, finally, and represent them as a true government. Not a body of five that votes the same way, that doesn't listen to the people, that ignores what's going on. I believe in a true representative government, and I believe my task would be to work for the people and listen to what the people have to say and represent the people in our city government, something that hasn't been going on. And I agree with Chris. Transparency is necessary. The only way transparency happens is when we're really honest with the people and we're not meeting at the mainstream cafe.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our second question. Frank Fournier, you will start with this one. This is on transportation. As the city grows in size, what should the city do to ensure that people can efficiently and safely get where they need to go?
Yeah, I guess the answer is pretty simple. Public transport is always nice. Having other more modern amenities like Uber and Lyft and all of these sort of things is also nice as well. I think having the bike lanes and all that is also great and keep things, keep things green. But you know, it's also, you have to weigh in the cost of all of that as well, you know, does it make sense? How does it fit within San Diego County? And I guess that goes back to what I said earlier that, you know, as a council member, you're not gonna be an expert always on everything, but you have to work with relevant experts. You gotta work with other council members to get them to vote a certain way by working with the public and understanding what they want to continue to make the city of Poway where people want to live. And I guess that's where my background comes into play in conflict resolution and negotiations. I am quite adept at doing that, and I'm excited to do that for the city.
Thank you. Barry, as the city grows in size, what should the city do to ensure people can efficiently and safely get where they need to go?
Well, the city's pretty much built out, but the city is not small. The city's 42 square miles, so it goes all the way up to Iron Mountain and 67 and all the way out to Rachel Bernado. The way Poway functions, though, is different. You have to kind of assess what type of lifestyle we have. We have a transient lifestyle with folks that want to get in their car and go someplace. The MTS buses run around town, and we've actually had the MTS cut back on us because they just don't have the ridership. If you look at it, other than school kids, sometimes going up to Poway High School, there's one or two people on a bus. So it becomes difficult. Frank mentioned Uber and Lyft. That seems to be the way of choice for most people nowadays. We don't really have the density and the work, work-life type of relationship where you live and work in the same area. We are building a couple of facilities like that right now. The outpost will provide that, live-work, and also we're gonna have the commons, and hopefully we can get folks that'll just drive up the hill or take a bus up the hill or have a bus come and get them, but it'll be local.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Chris Holtz, as the city grows in size, what should the city do to ensure people can efficiently and safely get where they need to go?
So this really comes down to what kind of community we are. We are a very car-centric community. Nearly every resident has a car, so when you're talking about, you know, units going in on Poway Road, you're talking about dual family incomes, typically two cars to a household. So that's important to keep in mind. With keeping that in mind, we need to remember that the MTS service, which we had in East Poway, has been significantly cut off. We're basically on our own now with regard to MTS, and I expect that they will further reduce that because we are the car-centric kind of remote community. So we need to really remember those things and keep them in mind, which means we need to understand we're gonna have traffic. We're gonna have parking issues. We're gonna have all of these things that need to be addressed. And unless we develop our own alternative, we are looking at a situation where the roads can't handle the amount of cars on them, and we don't have parking for all of them, so neighborhoods are gonna get filled with those trying to park and find somewhere to go, especially along Poway Road.
Thank you. And Phil, as the city grows in size, what should the city do to ensure people can efficiently and safely get where they need to go?
First of all, I'd like to address the fact that we have 19,000 people working up in the industrial park. And there's zero public transportation that goes up there. How the city council let that go by and hasn't pushed the issue, that's a mistake. I would have make sure that they do have transportation, and people don't have to walk from their homes, their residence, up to the new Amazon or to the General Atomix or to work at Home Depot or to work at Kohl's. So that's the number one. Number two, Poway Road is a main throwaway. Why put more and more homes on there, four stories, five stories high, and put more residents when that road can't even take the traffic it is right now? So I'm thinking that we need to take a look at the flow of traffic, and we need to put less residents on Poway Road than is planned. That'll take care of part of it.
Thank you. And Caitlin, as the city grows in size, what should the city do to ensure people can efficiently and safely get where they need to go?
Thank you. I'm actually Poway's representative on MTS, so I've learned a lot about transportation over the last few years and what's happening. One of the huge things that unfortunately COVID has kind of delayed was a ballot initiative that MTS was looking at that would have significantly expanded service to Poway. We would have gotten service to the business park. That was something that I advocated for. And in addition, it would have extended circulator, circulator routes within Poway to better access locations within the city and not just leaving the city. That's delayed, so we do have to look at the interim. One of the things that I've been working with MTS on is a pilot program for on-demand service. It was mentioned that we don't have high ridership in Poway, but those that do have it rely on it. And so having something like on-demand, which is really a way to utilize things like Uber, Lyft, and taxi cabs, while also utilizing public transportation funding to make that accessible and available and affordable to those that need it. So hopefully we'll be able to bring a pilot program like that to Poway.
Thank you. So I'm realizing that maybe it's just me, but I'm getting sick of hearing my own voice repeating every single question. So why don't we do it this way? I will read the question at the beginning, and if any candidate down the line would like me to repeat the question, just ask, and it won't come out of your time. Does that sound good? Sounds good. All right, and that'll allow us to get maybe another question in at the end, too, if we're not using so much time on the repetition. All right, so moving on, let's see. I believe this next one goes to Barry Leonard, if I'm not mistaken. Barry, what is the city's responsibility in limiting the effects of climate change from greenhouse gases?
Okay, good. I figured you'd ask me that question. And it's interesting because what can the city do to change climate change? The city's made a lot of efforts to do that. We just recently replaced over 3,000 streetlights with LED lights as a way to try and mitigate the effects of energy. We put in a substantial array on, actually, PUSD's property next to the high school for solar. We're working closely with Edco right now. We're doing the anaerobic digester, so we're gonna capture food waste and yard waste and transfer that into methane gas and fuel their trucks with that. We've made, we've made some pretty substantial moves in that way. We're also responsible for a lot of wastewater and expenses that most folks don't even see. So a lot of our budget goes towards things that do clean the environment and would meet the requirements for that plan. But we don't have a specific climate action plan, but we have done a lot in the way of getting to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chris Holtz.
So with regard to climate action plan, as Mr. Leonard said, we don't have a climate action plan for the city of Poway. That is a big deal. It's a big deal because not just are we missing out on opportunities that we can set forth for ourselves, like charging stations in most of the parking lots, which might help meet the state goal for electric vehicles. But it also means we're missing out on state and federal funds. Those are funds that are on the table that we just don't have access to. We've decided to not have a climate action plan. We've, you know, been the only city and let surrounding communities have them and move forward with them. So we're kind of limiting our abilities to do a lot of things. So while we have taken steps, yes, I think we really need to bite down on this and take action. We need to start addressing this. We need to form a plan. We need to look at what went before us and then say, hey, we can do that, too, and now we can have access to those funds. What more can we do? You know, at the end of the day, we are essentially leaving food on the table that we could use for the greater good of Poway.
Thank you. Phil Factor.
Of course, every Democrat loves that question because we are concerned about the environment. Chris, I would agree totally with you, and I'm appalled with the fact that the city council has not a plan at all, and they haven't joined the other cities. I believe that when you have other cities that have action plans, you can learn from them. And I think that would be a simple decision to make if you or I were on that city council is to join the other cities and find out what they're doing. Some of the things that we are doing, yes, that's great, but how about the landfill? Why not turn it into a solar energy plant? Why not create a new reservoir that could create power by sending water upstream and downstream? And then being able to turn, you know, power wheels to be able to create electricity? There's way many things that we can do that could go green. And one of those things would be education and make sure that we're supporting our kids when they're learning about going green. We, as a city, support that.
Thank you. Caitlin Frank.
Thank you. So my short answer on climate action plan is that the state's continually creating unfunded mandates to address climate change. And by following those mandates, we essentially have our own climate action plan. Though it was mentioned that we're leaving money on the table. I have yet to see any money that goes towards litigation defending these climate action plans. They become extremely litigious, extremely expensive, and you're basically opening yourselves up to lawsuits. And to me, that's an irresponsible use of taxpayer money. For example, the County of San Diego just voted recently to abandon their climate action plan because it's become so expensive to defend in court that they're going to start from scratch. So to me, that's an ineffective way to be using money when they could be doing things on their own without having to answer to those courts and those mandates. So to me, I think that if we continue to do that and do the right thing, Barry mentioned a lot of the things that we're already doing and will continue to do. I think that that is our way of addressing climate change.
Thank you. Let's see, Frank Fournier.
I may be young, but I'm pretty practical, and I have to agree, plans are just plans. I prefer actions. And just because you have a committee doesn't mean really anything. And so I think the council has been doing a lot of actions, which is probably more important than just plans. But I think that I will be able to work with Chris Hazelton and the Director of Public Works, Eric, in order to get even more things approved and pushed for that green initiative. And I think we could even do another thing where we can update the Poway website, which is very convoluted, and maybe have something there where citizens of Poway can put their opinions on how we can be more green and save money. But in reality, you gotta budget taxpayers' taxes and going green. And I think actions just mean a lot more than committees and plans.
Thank you. Let's see, I think we got everybody on that one, right? Okay. It's much easier to manage a session with two candidates than it is with five.
You're doing great, and we love you.
All right, question, we have a question for Chris Holtz. This one will go to you next. What parts of the state's and the county's policies on COVID-19 would you change, if any?
So, it's a really difficult question to answer, given that they seem to conflict with one another. The state's got one thing, the county wants to push another thing through the supervisors. So saying you like one means you dislike the other. And in the end, they are trying to, you know, San Diego's trying to open up more. California's more cautious and is imposing, you know, the current tier system that we have. So I think that we would, you're really a unified approach, you know? If we had more people agreeing to say, hey, this is the right way forward. Hey, we've learned from these mistakes in the past. We would have a lot better solution moving forward. We wouldn't have half reopened before and then closed again. We would have, you know, probably a better rate right now than the current infection rate. And I think it's, you know, that rush to reopen that San Diego has that's kind of hindering. But I think it's the control that Sacramento has that's making things more difficult to handle locally.
Thank you. Phil Factor.
Repeat the question, please.
Sure. What parts of the state's and the county's policies on COVID-19 would you change, if any?
Number one, whoa, I just lost my hearing. Just give me a second. Don't start the clock. See what happens when you get as old as I am. You gotta put your hearing mechanism back in. All right, here we go. On your mark, get set, go. Number one, I believe that we need to have a national policy, which we don't. Two, we're fortunate to have a strong governor that has a strong state policy. And the County of San Diego has done a tremendous job trying to keep it down. And I think we've done a great job, and I think we've done a great job in Poway. I think we need to wear masks. I think we need to be very conservative on what we're doing. And we need to make sure that we're protecting ourselves. We're protecting our families. We're protecting our kids. I don't believe that we should go at it too fast. I think that we need to be the ones that go very, very slow, very, very reluctant, and be able to start doing things, but do them safely and do them mindfully and not worry about what other people are doing. But let's be safe in Poway. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin Frank.
Thank you. I think one of the first things is that I'm a huge advocate for local control, and I think the governor has not been listening to the counties and the cities. Every county in California is extremely different. We have different makeups, different economies, different populations, different industries. And so, as shown by kind of the failures of some of the task forces that he's created, I think the governor has kind of been a bit on a power trip, to be honest. I think the governor has kind of been a bit on a power trip, to be honest. But I also think that we had kind of a meandering closure when it first started. First time that schools closed, it was a little confusing. I think that if we had been more straightforward and hardcore in the beginning to shut down, I think the frustrations to reopen might have been mitigated a bit because we would have been a little more clear. The communication and understanding to the public has not been great, to say the least. Most people don't understand what things mean, what the tiers mean, what will happen with this. When can schools open? It's all been extremely convoluted and confusing. And I think that stems from the governor down.
Thank you. Frank Fornier.
Uh, yeah, I, I gotta say that I, I, I think that this is probably a symptom of the federal level and the bipartisanship that we've been seeing. But, you know, as someone who works in science, I can tell you that I've been quite disappointed with who we're getting our advice from and, and what sort of data we're listening to and what sort of data we're changing to get the statistics that we want. But I can tell you from my background, I'd much prefer to see people actually looking into the data and taking advice from epidemiologists and virologists that are working on this versus geologists and maybe scientists that have that PhD label that aren't actually within the field. So I think COVID was, has been, the, the way California has been running it has been a, an example of how mismanagement from the top level can really affect a population. And I would have done it completely different, especially now with the most recent data, things have to change quick. And the data shows that we're handling it quite poorly right now.
Thank you. And Barry Leonard, over to you.
Thank you. COVID-19 is something nobody's ever seen before. We just don't really understand it. We don't know what the origin necessarily was and what the solution will be in the end. But we need to change the way we handle things. We have folks looking at it strictly from a scientific perspective that, that are saying it's a danger to, to our health. And so for that reason, we should just shut everything down. I disagree with that. I think that there has to be a balance of risk. We've been at this for six months. There needs to be an understanding that if a business owner wants to open up their business and a client wants to come to that business, as long as they, they follow guidelines, we know, wearing a mask and, and keeping socially distant, that they should be able to take that risk. It seems that the governor has, has decided that one size fits all, where there should be more of a local issue. If you have, you know, high incidences in your area, then maybe you need to tighten things up. If you don't, maybe you need to loosen things up. But we just don't have that opportunity right now because the governor's saying that everybody has to follow certain convoluted color schemes that are more confusing than helpful to me. So I would say it's a balance of risk.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next question. This next one is going to go to Phil first. Let's see. When there is next a discretionary budget available, what projects should the city tackle? For example, rebuilding community center, which was a project that the city tackled recently.
Thank you. Well, that's a tough question because there's so many needs in Poway. And one of them is the Performing Arts Center, which we're definitely having to take a look at how we're going to fund it. Another one that we're looking at right now is the Big Stone Lodge and trying to restore it. And how are we going to get money for that? Many of the parks in Poway are deteriorating. We haven't put an emphasis in restoring those parks. And so that, that needs money. I also am concerned about how we handle the homeless population and be able to get the right attention out there and, and be able to get social services to, to support the needs. So there's a lot of different things, but I would say the number one issue is to be able to maintain the budget and make sure there's a surplus. I, I don't believe that we're doing the great job right now. Years ago, we were, and the city council seems to keep on spending money that doesn't have. So I'd be a little more conservative on the spending.
Thank you. Kaylin?
Thank you. Um, I'd first like to clarify, we have a 45% budget reserve policy. So 45% of our operating budget maintain, remains in our budget. And that's a pretty high ratio compared to other cities. So, um, if money was no issue or we had extra money, I would love to see a complete overhaul of our entire park system. I'd love to add more inclusive play equipment for kids throughout the city. In addition to adding just more play equipment, more grass, more trees. I'd love to take care of the PCPA capital needs. There's a, quite a lot of infrastructure and, and inside the building that needs to be redone, taken care of. I'd love to solve that budgetary issue altogether and keep it as a city asset. And I'd like to build in some redundancies into our water system. And finally, I'd love to repurchase the Big Stone Lodge as a city property and not a housing property, housing authority property, and, and create a historic destination in Poway.
Thank you. Frank, over to you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to see the city take an active step in creating things that generate revenue for the city as well. You know, Point Loma has Liberty Station and you can go down there and kind of spend money within the restaurants. And it attracts people outside of the city into the city to spend their money. I'd like to see Poway kind of go that route as well because in the future, we may have budget issues. It depends on if we have a drought and what's happening. And I'd like to see us then invest within our infrastructure so that we don't have a time where we're boiling water and, and things like that that happened a, a, a few years back. When it comes to the Performing Arts Center, I think the best idea I heard, and it's not my own, so I won't take credit for it, is to generate, to create a committee that goes out there and gets revenue, grabs people like comedians or musicians or whatever to come to that, the Performing Arts Center. Uh, and people will come spend their money and attract more people to Poway. So I'd like to see more local spending and attracting outside of, of Poway people to Poway.
Thanks. Barry?
Thank you. Discretionary budget money is wonderful, but we don't have it right now. We have a real budget issue that we're facing as far as revenues are not keeping up. Our, our costs keep improving, are going up on public safety and, and revenues have not caught up through, especially sales taxes now with COVID. But if we had it, tough to go after Kaylin, she nailed most all the points. But the, the PCPA does have capital costs of $3.3 million. And, and Janet Johnson, I know you're familiar with this because Janet has met with us. We're trying to find a way to make that happen. We want to cut down on the, the subsidy that's almost $700,000 a year to the taxpayers who, many of them don't use the facility. And we're trying to find a way to keep it in the city's pocket as opposed to giving it away to PUSD. So I think that's, that's going to happen. It just takes a little more effort. If, if I had an extra whole bunch of money, I would really redo Community Park. I think Community Park is closest to all the people. It is, it's plenty of turf down there. It'd be great if we could fix everything up. And we do have a study right now where we're looking with community services and how we can fix that up.
Thank you. And Chris Holtz.
So with regard to budget, I mean, yes, as was mentioned, the city is kind of not doing as well as we have in the past. I mean, there's a lot of various reasons, but you know, what I would like to see, if we had that magic wand, it's pretty simple. We're losing one of the main places that, you know, teenagers, families, little kids can go. That's how a fun ball, it's been there forever. It's one of the things that I'd like to see the city take an active role in to say, hey, we need a family draw. A park is great, but a park is only one type of recreation. We need a facility that can host birthday parties, that can have activities on the side. There would used to be laser tag there, arcades. There's been all kinds of versions and iterations through the years. And it really comes down to, we need a place for families to go. If that magic wand had a second wave, I'd like to see reclaimed water, which has been essentially abandoned by our city, taken throughout the city, you know? That would alleviate a lot of the cost for cities' own funding of water and it would go to big places that need it.
Thank you. All right, so the next question will go to Kaylin first. So why don't we dive deeper into the PCPA, which several of you touched upon. So for the attendees who may not know, the city's been discussing selling its stake in the PCPA. So what role should the city play in supporting arts and culture in Poway?
That's a great question. And I think that the issue with PCPA has really brought that to light. We've talked a lot about, well, personally, I've talked a lot about how the offer from PUSD when they approached us is something that looks great on paper. And then you start to dig in deeper and you realize that the school district is probably not the most appropriate agency to be, be supporting the arts and culture in our city. I would like to see a new model at PCPA because I think that one of the important things for the city to do is create attractions that attract residents and a variety of residents. I don't consider a lot of the programming that comes to PCPA very family friendly or attractive to a lot of different generations. And so I'd like to see something that, you know, we're looking at the current model does not work and we know that there will be a change. We don't know what exactly it will look like, but we're, we're studying that. And I'd like to see something that, that really benefits a broader spectrum of our residents.
Thank you. Frank?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to clarify, I, I think I said a few years back, but I think it was in February, just kind of lose track of time. Yeah, I mean, I think, like I mentioned in the, in the last question, I think one of the better ideas I've noticed is this committee where they would kind of go out and they would generate revenue for the Performing Arts Center. And then through that money, you could do all the, the repairs it needs. I, I think it needs to, you know, at one point I heard like five or $6 million of repairs and there's like an annual cost to it. So you could use that committee in order to do that. When it comes to reclaimed water, I've been down this route before. I think it's a great idea, but you know, we have to work with the city of San Diego. And I think John Mullen may be a representative for that. So I always urge people to call him. He seems to know a lot about reclaimed water and, and how applicable it is and if we can actually do it. Great idea, but I don't know if it's, it's possible in Poway. Performing Arts Center, I think it's simple. Get this committee, generate revenue, problem solved.
Thank you. Let's see, after Frank, we have Barry.
Thank you. As Kaylin said, we were approached by PUSD because they currently have an agreement with the city that says they're entitled to 35% usage. They expressed a desire to have much more time over there and wanted to increase their programming. So that's what started the whole thing. Unfortunately, it's gone on for about a year now. It's nowhere, there is no agreement. There, it, nothing's happened. So what we did was we formed this subcommittee to say, PUSD is probably not a good partner to have. Let's go out and explore what we can do. So there's different groups. We've got Poway on stage who puts on performances there that you see on the marquee, but they also do a lot of school related things for grant money. We have the community groups that use it, the different dance recital groups, Poway orchestra and, and other, you know, big groups that do plays and things there. But we do need sponsors. We need to get those folks that, that have deep pockets to step up and, and help us out with trying to offset some of the cost involved. So we will find a way to make this happen. It's just a matter of, of getting enough information to lower the cost and raise the revenue.
Thank you. Let's see, after Barry, we have Chris.
So with regard to the PCPA, this has not been a new issue. This has been an ongoing for years with budget review committees recommending this. And it's sad to see another year squandered. Realistically, we've known that this has been an issue. And rather than address it head on and say, hey, we need stakeholders. We need to get the people that are actually using the facility and say, we have a problem with our revenue. What can you do to support that? You know, that's how we really lead this effort. And we haven't seen that. We've seen, okay, maybe we'll listen to Power Unified, maybe we won't. No real communication with the community at large. And so we've left a year, another year on the table of what's going to happen with the PCPA, while the budget still can't support it, while the capital costs still are there. And so we really need somebody that's going to take this and say, we need to start with step one. What can we accept? What is our annual cost that we are willing to accept? Start there and work the way down and see what we can get, what the stakeholders can provide, what changes we can make and really see how close we can get.
Thank you. And Phil?
Thank you, Chris, for verifying that because fact check. The fact is, is that our budget committee said it costs us over $700,000 a year and we can't afford to keep it. Then we had people step in front of the city council, maybe 30, 40, 50 people. And also one person had a petition, okay, that had a thousand people's signatures saying it's ours, let's keep it. And so Phil Factor decided to put that on his platform and run. If you look at the ballot, I am to safeguard that Poway Performing Arts Center. And the reason why is for the people, it's our jewel. It's where our performing arts are performed. We need to promote it, we need to save it, we need to keep it. We need to make sure that the people that love the arts have a place to go and perform. And so I'm all 100% for keeping it. This city council was ready to dump it and give it to the city or to the Poway Unified School District? No way. It's ours, let's keep it for Poway and let's make it work.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. So the next one, Frank Fornier, we'll go to you to begin with. And we have about time for two more questions and then we'll have to go to closing statements. It goes fast. All right. Are the city's current in lieu fees set at a fair rate? If so, why? And if not, what's an appropriate rate?
I'm not sure, I actually know the answer to this. I, I'm not sure if they are set or not. This is something I'd have to look into to even, to even answer, to be honest with you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move then to Barry.
Thank you. And I mean, in lieu fees were reduced some years ago, back when we had a lot of budget issues and, and struggling folks that just really couldn't afford to build in Poway. The city and the state have teamed up to make it almost impossible to build at a reasonable cost and, and keep housing prices in line. And it's a double edged sword because if you require builders to pay large amounts of money for in lieu fees, they won't build appropriate facilities for us. And when that happens, the, the cost will be too high for folks that's trying to get to live here. So it's kind of a catch 22. Right now, the fees are pretty low. We can raise them if necessary. But right now, with the cost being what they are, about 40% of the cost of, of building something is all in fees and regulations as opposed to lumber and windows and property. And we've got to make, make some changes to that before we can go and tap them for more money.
Thank you. Chris?
So simple answer, yes, these are too low. $500 is outrageous. It was 4,500 before. And here's the simple answer. You can get rid of the in lieu fees. Let the state's guidance dictate the 15%, the 10%, the whatever for the affordable housing piece. And then it's on the builder to build it. Right now, what we're doing is we're defunding ourselves. We're saying, hey, we'll take your $500 and we won't be able to afford the affordable housing that we have to put in. Then the state comes in and says, you didn't build it, you need to build it, and we have no money to build it. So what happens? We either raise taxes, we take out loans on credit, we're in a bad way. And so at the end of the day, we either demand an appropriate fee, which I would go with based on San Diego and other communities, 10,000-ish, but at least start at 4,500. That's where we were before all of this craziness and 500 is just outrageous.
Thank you. And let's see, after Chris, yeah, Phil?
Ditto, Chris. And, uh, you know, I asked that question, why is it only 500? Why isn't it not 4,500 like it was? And then I did all the research and I found out, well, they dropped it to 500 when we were going through the recession. And now they don't really have a reason for keeping it at 500, other than to do these developers a big favor. I want to make it really clear that I'm against development. I'm against big projects as this city keeps on proposing. And I'm for affordable housing. If they're going to put in any type of housing at all, I think that we need to build places where people can afford to live in Poway and not run people into the million dollar streak that we keep on doing. So, uh, you know, let's charge these people 4,500 and let's push the, the ticket of being able to build affordable housing for our citizens that need housing so badly.
Thank you. And Kaylin?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think it's probably time that we need to have that readdressed. It hasn't come since the recession and I think we're out of that. Although unfortunately, we're, we may be heading into another one, another hopefully short-lived one. I'd love to see efforts at the state first to reduce some of that cost. As was mentioned, the fees and regulation are extremely high and something like CEQA reform is extremely overdue and, and needed. And that drives up the cost of any development. But I think that one of the bigger issues when it comes to things like affordable housing is the stigma in the community. We're looking to build a, hopefully will be a wonderful affordable housing development at Armona Vista site. And we've got affordable housing on Poway Road for seniors and veterans. And we've got the adults with, uh, Vila de Vida for adults with developmental disabilities. So I think in Poway, we're setting a really great standard for affordable housing. But I'd love to see it welcomed into the community more. I don't think that regardless of what the fee was, something like the farm would have included affordable housing because I don't think that regardless of what the fee was, um, something like the farm would have included affordable housing because of that stigma.
Thank you. I think I got everybody right. Okay, so we're moving on to the next question. Let's see, we will have Barry begin. When a council or mayoral seat is vacated? When do you consider appropriate to appoint a replacement? When do you consider appropriate to hold a special election?
Well, we've been through this one. Uh, the cost to uh, have a special election for one person. For one part of a term is astronomical. And I try to protect the taxpayers' money as best we can. Uh, the the voters in Poway usually make pretty good decisions about who they vote for. And I think that the the city council uh, also understands what they look for in a person. And how that person will help drive the quality of life in Poway. So I would say if you have uh, two years or or less. That it's appropriate for an appointment. I think that uh, spending five hundred thousand dollars on on a special election. Is a crazy way to elect somebody that probably would have got appointed anyway. And um, I think that it's it's up to the voters every four years to figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, Chris?
So just to be clear, um, if it's two years or less, it's required to that you can appoint and a special election will be at the end of the two years. So it's a four-year appointment you're trying to make, you're going to have a midterm special election, uh, requirement. You can't appoint for four years. Um, based on California law. Besides that, with regard to how appointments work. It's um, kind of been disingenuous here in Poway recently with uh, twenty eighteen as a big example. Ten council meetings before an election. So we're already having an election that reduces the said cost. Um, and the out of those ten council meetings, eight uh, eight of them were actually held, two were uh, canceled. So we did an appointment. Um, I completely disagree with that. We're going to have a special election. We already have candidates going to run. Uh, it was not necessary in any way, shape or form. Um, I think the exception should be the appointment process, not the rule. And instead, we've kind of reversed that. So I'd like to see it uh, go back to the way it should be where uh, the people get their voices heard and uh, elect their representatives.
Thank you. Phil?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Well, first of all, I'm unhappy with the uh, the way people have been selected onto this city council. In the past uh, years. And uh, this would be another uh, travesty to see someone selected in. And we'll have the same type of government that we have right now. It's wrong. Let's let the people decide. It's a democracy. It's a governing body that should be selected by the people, for the people, and not done at the mainstream cafe, period.
Thank you. Uh, Kaylin?
No comment? No, I'm just kidding. Um, I I am comfortable with an appointment if the remainder of the term is a year or less. I think that it's important to balance the cost to the taxpayers versus um, the impact of having someone appointed versus elected. So that is my comfort level. Um, and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Uh, Frank?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I I think when whenever you can, it's nice to save money. Of course, five hundred thousand dollars is a big uh, price point. But you know, I think that as Americans, we have the right to vote for who uh, who governs our city. And so I'd much prefer that. And if we are going to uh, appoint someone as the exception. Uh, I'd like to see the city council go out and get the public opinion and get people that are are from Poway, raised in Poway. At least are in Poway more than five years. Uh, I'd much prefer that um, than having anyone in coming from the outside. Or or going for uh, certain endorsements, Republican or Democrat, or trying to use this as a stepping stone for further growth. Uh, I think we're all as a society tired of politicians and we just want some local people to help run our city.
Thank you. Let's see, did I get everybody there? I think I did. Okay. Oh, I was hoping that we could get to a few more questions, but it is already eight fifty-five and I want to respect everyone's time. So we'll move into closing statements. It's, there's one minute each. Um, and because, let's see, because Phil began. And we will have Kaylin begin the closing statements.
Thank you. Um. Thomas Jefferson said, the government closest to the people serves the people best. And that is what I strive to do each day as your council member, serve you in the best way possible. I work very hard to be responsive and accessible to ensure residents get the information and assistance they need. And as a woman with young children, I bring a perspective that has been lacking on our council in recent years. As you can see, no women are even running this year. I'm a proud member of Ser Optimus International Poway, a wonderful group of women helping women in need. In addition, I'm a neighborhood coordinator for the Poway Neighborhood Emergency Corps and actively involved with Chamber of Commerce. We're doing great things at the city, but the work is not done yet. With the recession and unemployment this pandemic has brought, our city is not without some clouds on the horizon. But with united and experienced leadership, our city will weather the storm and come out even better. We enjoy a high quality of life and that's why I'm dedicated to making Poway a wonderful place to live. I'm endorsed by Mayor Steve Voss, the entire Poway City Council, our Poway firefighters, our deputy sheriffs. And I'd love your vote. If you'd like more information, my cell and email are on my website, kaylinforpoway.com, and I'd love to hear from you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kaylin. Frank Fornier?
As I mentioned at the start of this forum, being a good city council member involves not only genuinely caring about the community, but knowing how to work with others to get things done. I might not know what in lieu means, but I'll work with those experts that do and do my due diligence to do what's right for the public. Uh, by working with the public. I hope this forum gave you a better idea of both why I care about Poway and why I will care. If anyone has any more questions for me, suggestions, or just wants to discuss anything further, even about rugby, big rugby fan. I want to give you all my personal phone numbers, so reach out to me at eight five eight four four two five two zero six or my website, fornierforpoway.com. And that's with a a number four. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry?
Thank you. Thank you for doing this as well. And and thank you to the folks for watching. It probably sounds a little boring to folks, but it's a necessary thing. You know, I prefer common sense over politics. I'm not a politician. I never pretend to be. I can't stand politicians because I find them to be mostly greedy or selfish people. And anyone who knows me would say that I'm neither one of those things. Uh, I'm a volunteer. I volunteer to help the community. Some of you have said, oh, I've been here a long time and you know, we need to look at people who've been here a long time. I've only been here seventeen years. And that's not as long as some of you, but I've done much more than any of you to make this community what it is. I'd like to see more of you show up and I'd like to see more of you do things. We had a a community uh, emergency fair the other day. And nobody came down there to help us out. Uh, we're always looking for help. We're always trying to make the community better. We had three hundred people show up to try and take. Advantage of the opportunity we gave, but we didn't have any of the candidates except Kaylin and myself show up down there to do something. It's important just to do things. Don't say you've been here a long time because it doesn't make a difference in talking. Actions count.
Thank you. Alright, Chris?
So uh, I'll start with my information, uh, www.OlpsForPoway.com or you can reach me on my cell phone, six one nine. Three nine six one six zero five. Um, there's a lot that we discussed tonight. And at the end of the day, you know, if I attended more council meetings, I would continue my record of attending more than uh, one of my opponents, actually both of my opponents. Um, it's not about attending at the end of the day. It's about what you've gotten done. Without being on council, when I ran in twenty sixteen, I said, hey, you know, we need to address certain things. And some of those have come up. When I ran in twenty fourteen, some of those came up, campaign signs, Escola Road. Um, just little things across the board that councils listen to. So maybe if I was on council, I could do a little bit more at the end of the day. But when it comes down to is how you've been involved in the community. I've been volunteering with the school. I've been, you know, a part of Poway American Little League. I've been a part of many things in this community and I have answers to the questions. So at the end of the day, you know, when those hard questions come up, we either need to find the answer or know the answer. And right now, I don't think we have either.
Thank you. And Phil?
So I'm going to start my uh, opening by telling you, first of all, I love Poway. Go green, go Poway. And uh, I'm going to tell you, people come first. And now you're going to get my written speech. I'm running for this job, city council. Because I believe that I'll make a difference in this city council. I believe that I will bring the people a voice to the government. I believe that I'll listen, I'll care, I'll be honest, I'll be upfront, I'll make myself available. I'll bring something to Poway that this city council hasn't brought to you for a long time, and that is trust. I believe that this city deserves the very best. And I believe that I'm going to be one of those that make a difference in this city. I'd like you to vote for Phil Factor. You could uh, check out my ballot. You could check out everything about me. And I'm upfront, just like I was with my students. I love my students, I love their families, and now it's your turn to be loved by me. And uh, by the way, I was at that uh, meeting, asked Terry Sorensen. And uh, um, I was also there and I do care about Poway. This is a very important job and I'm applying for it. Vote for me.
Thank you. Thank you to all five candidates. Um, thank you for coming tonight and answering our, oh, I miss Chris? No? Who's getting pointed at?
Helen, did you go?
Everybody did go. Yeah, okay. Alright, cool. Then well, thank you uh, to all five of you for coming tonight and and answering our questions. That once again, were compiled by uh, the board and our club members and guests have come to past meetings. Who have written into us over the past few weeks since we announced this event. Um, we are in election season. The ballots have been mailed out. Uh, I got mine today. If you haven't received it yet, you should be getting it in the next couple of days. Um, and for those of you who are attendees or watching this uh, before Thursday, the Poway Democratic Club is holding a ballot review Thursday evening. We're going to go through every single race and position and measure proposition on the ballot. Um, so if you're not already on the mailing list, you can go to powaydemocraticclub.org, join our mailing list and get the Zoom link info. Um, thank you for for coming, all five of you. Thank you so much and good luck.
Barry, I'll see you at the meeting, eight thirty, Hamburger Factory.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.